Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming this evening. We'll go ahead and get started. Can we take the roll, please?
Trusty Spurling.
Here.
Trusty Lee.
Here.
Trusty Hines.
Trusty Youngerman.
Yes.
Trusty Marisack.
Yes.
Trusty Bann.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum this evening. We'll move on to item four already, the public participation. Is there anybody here for the public hearing for special service area number thirty-seven? We'll go ahead and officially open the public hearing.
We do.
If there's anybody that would like to address the board on that topic, now would be your time. All right, hearing done, we'll close the public hearing and move on to item B, which is public comments. And I know we have a few folks to address the board this evening. So if you can come on up one at a time, please sign your name in and your address and contact information if you can. Just like to remind everybody, if you can, keep your comments brief. I know that there's several people here on one topic. You can go ahead and come up.
Should I start talking first or sign my name first?
It doesn't matter.
I'll talk first then. My name is Wallace Sattler. I live at 109 Third Avenue in Montgomery. And I'm here today because we are having some work down our street and we have some additional problems that hasn't been addressed yet. And since I have limited time, I thought I'd write what I was going to say down so I wouldn't forget anything. We have a problem on Third Avenue. At the present time, our street is under construction with a new water main. My understanding is that when they finish with the water main, they plan patching the street and doing nothing about installing a storm sewer or even paving the whole street. The houses on the north side of the street get water in their front yards, basements, and even, in some cases, in their backyards. On the south side of the street, all the debris is washed out onto the street or left in front of our houses. I was told that the installation of a storm sewer would cost around fifty thousand dollars because the street is only six hundred feet long. There are plans already drawn up for the storm sewer. We had a meeting with Mike Povens here on Third Avenue, and he talked to some of the neighbors and was in agreement that something had to be done. I had asked the mayor and the five trustees that I talked to whether they would take the time to drive and see what kind of mess we have there. Although my basement does not flood, I feel the water carrying debris with it running across the street. And when it freezes in the winter, it is a safety hazard that must be addressed. I am also tired of cleaning all the debris that gets washed into my front yard. What is our goal? To have the whole street paved and the storm sewers installed. Quoting from the village webpage, quote, "The village board is responsible for enacting legislation, establishing policies, and providing guidance for actions that will impact the quality of life in the village." A positive action from the village trustees on this matter will certainly improve our quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Could we have the other people on our block speak?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
My name's Charlotte Pennington. I live at 101 Third Avenue. And I'm about like him, about what I'd like to have, and I'd like to have blacktop. That's what I'd like to have. That's what I want.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christine Hansen. I live at 106 Third Avenue. I live right across the street from Wally. You can see my house. It's the second one on the north side of the road. I live in a kind of a split tri-level. And we get water when we have rains that come down. They come down from Wally's side of the road. They cross the road at this driveway that you can see right there and come down in between our houses. I usually get water in my basement. It's not a foot or even that much. It's sometimes an inch and a half, but it's still a lot to clean up after every rain. So that's a concern to me. Also, we have school buses for the 129th School District that come up our street. There's, they come up in the morning for the middle school, the grade school, and the high school. And then they come again in the afternoon when they're delivering kids back home. So when this freezes at the top of the hill, that's an issue for them to get out of our little area there and out onto Montgomery Road where they go down to Rye Cliff and they pick up along Montgomery Road as well. That's kind of a safety hazard for the school buses. Right now, they're not coming up our street because it's, it's not as torn up. It's actually more torn up than what this picture shows right now. But the buses can't get through right now, so they're going up Felmore, the street behind us. That's a hazard for them to turn onto Broadway there. You can't see, and a lot of the cars go really fast. It's, I think hazardous for our kids. And that's my biggest concern, plus the water. I get water that comes right up to my garage door. It does recede. But right now, I've got muck everywhere in my yard. I've got muck on my driveway. I've got muck on my sidewalk. And the front yard, it looks to me like it's caving in since last night, which I'm kind of going to make an assumption that that's going to be fixed in the course of all of the work that's being done. But it was sort of a shock when I went out tonight to look to see the ground is sunken about four inches. That's what I have to say.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Juan De Leon. I live at 102 Third Avenue. And I have a similar problem that when it rains, the water runs through that cul-de-sac there and then jumps across the street and ends up going behind 104, which is next door to my house. And it builds up so much back there that the village, the last time it rained heavy, had to bring out pumps and pump that area out because it was just a lot of water back there. That water eventually works into my basement, and I get a couple inches of rain when I get a lot of heavy rainfall. So I too would like to see something done if it's possible, you know, like storm sewers or improvement on the, at least on the street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alma Elizondo. My address is 104 Third Ave, right by Mr. Juan's house, where neighbors. We do get flood on our front yard. This water that comes from the south towards us, it goes down the hill into our front yard. We have had water in our basement also. So yeah, we would like something done if it's possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the board on this issue? I know we have another issue to come in, but... Okay, hearing done, we'll move on before we do move on. I would like to obviously echo your guys' concerns. I don't think, from my standpoint, I don't challenge the fact that you do have some drainage problems in the area, obviously with the pictures. But I had talked to our engineer and Public Works Director about that earlier today. So I would like our Public Works Director, Mike Povens, to kind of summarize what's happened up to this point, maybe some short-term and long-term solutions if you can.
Thank you, President Brawley. I did meet with Mr. Sattler and some of the neighbors who are here tonight all last week, and they pointed out their concerns. And as you can see from the pictures, there's some problems out there. So what I would like to do is really break the, there were a variety of concerns tonight, kind of break it down into three sections. The one is resurfacing of the street. It's really separate from the water issues. We did award this contract. It did come in under budget. So Engineer Wallers and I are working on getting quotes for resurfacing of Third Avenue to see if we can do it within the originally budgeted amount. So we'll bring that back to a board meeting in the near future for discussion and your consideration. At that time, we should be able to tell you how much we think we can get it done for and how much money we have available to do it. So that's first avenue. Second would be to look at the water issues in near term and long term. As you can see from one of the photographs, there's a, it's actually two driveways, I believe, or one, Walter. Is that one driveway where the culverts are? Are there two driveways there where the photograph was?
Part of my driveway is there, and then you're talking about the German's house.
So we have two driveways that come...
Excuse me. Then there's actually two houses up on the hill from the German's.
Right.
And that actually, that hill goes in two steps. I mean, if you look through the street, it won't look so high, but it's actually another step all the way up to the German's house because my house is only actually halfway up that hill. It's a steep hill if you walk up there.
So what we'd like to do is, that's not it. That's the picture. So from where we're sitting is where the culverts come under that driveway. So what I'd like to do at first is analyze how much water is coming to that area and see if there's a better way that we can collect the water and get it under that driveway and down through that existing ditch to help prevent it from overtopping the driveways and spilling onto the south side of the road. As you can see, the houses on the south side, some of them are lower than the pavement. The ditches aren't as deep there. So again, as much of the water as we can keep in the ditch, excuse me, I've got my north and south mixed up. Houses on the north side are a little bit lower. So again, we'll focus on a short-term project that we might be able to do soon, just to better collect that water and keep it in that ditch where it's designed to go. A long-term project then, and probably a capital improvement project for budget consideration, would be the consideration of a storm sewer, the addition of a storm sewer on that block. So again, Engineer Wallers and I will work on designs and estimates for that, and that would be a number we'd most likely bring back to you during the budget process. In regard to the plans, it has been mentioned, and I believe there was a set of, a set of storm sewer plans done for Third Avenue. They were done some time ago. I have not seen them, so I can't speak on how, if they're a hundred percent finished or unfinished, what the design considerations were or assumptions. So I would hesitate to say that we can do the job for fifty thousand dollars. It may turn out that that's what it is. But I just want to be cautious. I don't want to make false promises to people that we can put a storm sewer in there for fifty thousand dollars that's going to solve this problem, so. So we'll take a look at those plans as part of our overall review of the block.
Okay. Thank you.
Can we ask questions?
I think you had it.
Director Povens, it looked to me from examination that some of the runoff in this area may be coming from Montgomery Road. With King County developing some plans for that road, is there a way for them to participate in solving this as well?
We can inquire as to that. I don't know what the extent of their design is at this point or if they're looking at that or not, but we can certainly contact them and find out.
I drove through there on Saturday to take a look, and I think it makes absolute sense to resurface the whole road. I would say that the half that's there was in probably pretty rough shape prior to any of the work starting anyway. With the flooding issues that the residents have gone through in the past, is there any, do you think there's any potential for any sort of grant money or anything to help pay for some of these improvements?
Look into that, Trusty Youngerman. I'm not aware of any immediately. We could look into that if there's grant money or... I mean, most of that money that I'm familiar with comes through from disaster relief type of money as we had with the April flooding. And that's generally after the fact reimbursement for repairs. I don't know if there's money available for new construction or mitigation. There might be.
And what type of work that was going on on the north side, what were we installing there? What was going on there? Was it...
The new water main is being installed. It's been, actually been in our plans for several years. We've been working through the state. Actually, we did receive some funding through the state of Illinois. It's taken us a few years to get through that process and receive the money, so that's why it's being done this year. The water main is being replaced. We had an excessive number of breaks on Third Avenue. And then again, it was being looked at separately, more of a water project.
Excuse me, can I say something? I was the one that took the pictures. That picture was actually taken in April, and they didn't start working on the project for the water main until two weeks ago. So that's actually like that in April. And that horse that's standing up there, that was there for actually for almost the whole summer. There was another leak in the water main there that they fixed, and then they just kind of half-assedly patched the hole there. And there was two more further down the street. And I seriously think that they put in a new water main because I think a leak like a sieve, and I think it probably costed us city money.
Well, we did put in a new water main because it leaked like a sieve, and we recognized that. There were a series of breaks on there, and we realized that. So we worked it into the program. I, just for perspective, this, we do a comprehensive street inventory. This street, in that condition, rates as a fair. And I understand to the people that live on it, it seems like it's in bad shape, and it's not in great shape. And I agree with Mr. Sattler on that, that it's not the best street in town. But again, I'm trying to look at this in perspective, and as we do each year when we assign our limited funding to road repairs, we have to look at the entire picture, but...
I think that's a, that's an excellent point, that the bigger picture is that there are roads in Montgomery that are this condition or worse, and that we're actively trying to fix those, but we don't have a funding source for that. So that becomes hard on a year-to-year basis, and I would caution the board, and when he, when we look at allotting some of the excess that was available in this contract to resurfacing a road that's not on our five-year plan, and then push down somebody who actually, some road who is on our five-year plan that's in worse condition rated by our engineers. So I think it's something that we're definitely going to look at. I know that Trusty Hines and Trusty Lee have a comment, and then I think we'll move on at this point, but we will absolutely follow up with the residents. Staff will contact you and follow up, and we'll have another discussion at the board level at a future meeting. But go ahead, Trusty Hines.
Yeah. In nineteen ninety-four, they were supposed to do that road, and they were told they ran out of money. Now, that road should have been done before a lot of these other ones. I don't know why it was bypassed. I can't tell you that. But I think they deserve to have that done this year. You know, you can't keep putting them off.
Trusty Lee?
Especially the lady that had the tri-level. I had a tri-level, and the way the windows are on the bottom of the tri-level, all the water. And mine was landscaping from my neighbor's, not saying yours is, but that's the problem with the tri-level. It's that low. And an inch of water on a tri-level is a mess because it comes right through your window. Looking at the street, I know it doesn't have curbs, and most of the people don't want to have curbs, it seems like. I don't know. That's, most of them in that area at least didn't. But definitely, maybe from where the brick house coming up, probably needs like a complete patch job like we do on Sherman. The rest of that street farther down from this picture, I agree, there's streets worse than that. But as far as taking care of this mess right here in front that he's got a picture of, that definitely is crumbled. That we can do a patch, and we do patching, and maybe down at the other end, because you can't really tell what it is. But it is tough to redo a whole street money-wise, but patching it, that area right there definitely is. And I like to see, you look at some landscaping because without curbs, all you need is a little high, and if his water's running over there, there's something to do with the, it's not coming straight down, so.
Right. That'll be part of the first phase of the runoff, is seeing how we can prevent that water from overtopping the pavement. And I think it's fair not to pass judgment either way tonight as to whether it's worthwhile to resurface it now or not. The board is so inclined. I'd like to have an opportunity with Engineer Wallers to look into that. And there may be some efficiencies in doing it now. We are patching half the road as it is, so I'm not ruling it out by any means tonight. But if you could just give us a short period to get some reasonable numbers together for your consideration, I think that would be the best approach at this point.
If we, just one quick question. If we resurface that road this year and came in in the next year, and, or whenever we did the storm sewer on the, on the south side, are we going to damage that road again?
If we resurface it this year and then do a storm sewer project? It's possible there would be some repair that would have to be done. I guess it depends on the alignment of the storm sewer, whether or not curb and gutter were involved. I mean, there's lots of variables. So I can't say with certainty one way or the other that it would or wouldn't. But knowing the nature of construction projects, as some of the residents have seen, they're, they look worse before they look better.
Oh, sure.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, and then real quick, but then we have to do, we have to move on.
You had mentioned that you didn't think it'd be right to push people off of your five-year plan that are already on the books to have work done. But what about the people like us on the twenty-year plan? I mean, we've been waiting nineteen years already, so...
Nineteen years.
Doesn't that count for anything?
It does, and that could have been well before we had the five-year plans in place. And the beauty of it is it takes the political aspect of it out, where we rate our streets, and the worst five streets are however our staff determines get fixed. I'm not saying that you guys are not owed, you know, what you say, just that at our current funding levels, it's forty-five or, what's the...
Sixty-five years.
Sixty-five years before we circle back to every street.
But you haven't been there on our street yet. They have been there for over twenty-five years. And Mike says, when I talk to him, Mike says, "We don't necessarily do the worst streets first." I didn't understand what that meant, but that's what he said to me. Because I said, "I think we got the worst street on Montgomery," and he said, "No." And he said, "Sometimes we don't do the first street, or worst streets first." So what does that mean?
That's true, and yeah.
Do you want to address that?
Briefly, we have, we have a ranking of streets based on their condition index. And when we make proposals to the village board for our annual repair program, we look at the condition, the location of the street, the amount of traffic it has, and its place within the system. So there are some streets that carry high volumes of traffic and are very critical to moving traffic throughout the community that may have a better rating but get resurfaced first. Additionally, they're low-volume streets, take much longer to deteriorate. So we can leave some low-volume streets without resurfacing, without the danger of them falling apart in the near future, where some high-volume streets just won't last that long. And once you get into full reconstruction of streets, the cost of that work goes up tremendously. So we try to balance traffic volumes and where it places in the system and how it affects traffic flow throughout the community as well as condition. So we don't start with the list and say, "What's the lowest rated?" and do the first five and then do the next five. So that, that was the intent of the comment, that we don't do the worst first.
And I know this board, our five-year plan expires after next year or before next year?
We'll need to do a reevaluation next year.
Next year. So in the next...
One more summer.
In the next year, about a year from now, we'll be looking at a new five-year program, so. With that, we'll step away from that. Again, I appreciate everybody for coming and don't want to discount the fact that you guys, you know, when people have water in their basements due to runoff, I mean, it's a concern that we've all felt recently, very recently, in Lakewood Creek side of town too. So we hear your concern. Staff will be, Public Works Director Mike Povens will be in touch with you. And I know that we're all going to talk about this at an upcoming meeting. I don't know what meeting, otherwise I would tell you, but when staff's prepared with a presentation, we'll, we'll come back.
I have Mr. Sattler's contact information, Walter. It's all right, I can, I have your contact information. If it's all right, I can let you know.
Why, certainly. I appreciate it.
Next time, we're going to talk about it publicly. If anyone else wants to send me their contact information, I can include where they would ever like to be on that list.
It's just my understanding now that basically there's not going to be anything now until the end of the year here, or what am I hearing from them?
Again, if I could, I'd like to bring a series of recommendations back to the board. The first is going to be to look at the immediate problem of collecting that water in the existing ditches. And as we, you and I talked about, there's a couple of culverts up on that east end, right, the east end of the block, where all that water comes down. So that'll be the first focus, and with the possibility of making some improvements there this year, this summer, fall period, we're almost out of summer. Then the next two, the paving would be the next one. Engineer Wallers and I are going to look at the viability of doing that, and we'll bring that to the board in time to discuss, in case you want to do it this year. I'm sure we can have information ready in fairly short term. And then the third part, an overall storm sewer project is going to be a little bit more challenging to go through that process, and the funding is going to be more difficult too. So that is something that we'll probably go through our budget process, which will start, staff starts working on that in late fall, early winter. And then the board considers that over a series of meetings over the course of the winter and into spring. So that project would probably be some future year if we decided to do that.
Another twenty?
I don't know. I don't know.
Okay. With that, we'll move on, and I appreciate everybody for coming. I know we do have another item on for our public comment. So if the other folks would like to address the board at this time regarding... Go ahead.
My name's Chet Albright. I'm representing Genesis Community Church. And the last time I stood behind this podium was when the village board approved the planning commission's recommendation for a special use permit for the old Montgomery Village Hall, and that's what we still call it, the old Montgomery Village Hall, to turn into Genesis Community Church. We met all the requirements put before us of the planning commission and the consul at that time. And we were happy to do it, although it meant expending a considerable amount of money. We found out that although the village of Montgomery could use it as their village hall, it had numerous code violations. But the village was grandfathered in on those, and we understand it, I guess. But anyway, we did take possession of the building and brought it up to code, put in two handicap bathrooms that was never there before, put a fire alarm system in, worked with your city staff closely. And I want to, I've thanked them since, and I'll thank them again publicly, although at the time I didn't necessarily agree with some of their conditions. Looking back, they were right on every call. And it was a pleasure to work with them, and we still have contact with them. Genesis Community Church is not a new kid on the block. In fact, right now, we're a hundred and nine years old. For a hundred and four years, we were on South Lake Street in Aurora, just south of Prairie, the big red brick building church. Our church was founded in eighteen ninety-three. And in eighteen ninety-five, the factory workers that formed that church started carrying wheelbarrows of limestone up from the Fox River, and the street wasn't there then, brought it up with wheelbarrows, and basically built that church. It's always had a southwest Aurora and Montgomery congregation. If some of the old timers in Montgomery might recognize the name of Stadler or Hattersley, Wilkie, they're still current Montgomery residents. We felt that about four or five years ago, we had let a Hispanic congregation start meeting at our church on Lake Street. And they fell in love with the building, although we certainly had strong memories also after all those years. But we sold that church to the Hispanic congregation, and they're doing well. We met in schools for two years, kind of like one... We met in schools for two years, kind of like wandering on the desert, really. And then we noticed that there was a for-sale sign in front of the Montgomery Village Hall. We took our congregation there, saw our possibilities, although at the time, and some of you were active at that time, it had all the office partitions in the middle and, and the offices along the side. We saw great use for that building with a little sweat equity and a lot of creativeness. And there's some other people from the congregation here tonight, along with our pastor Jeff Barrett. But we went to work and paid to have some of it done, safety issues, plumbing, electricity, fire alarm system. And it's incredible how our wives could handle a paintbrush. Redid the whole building, and, and it's a building, Stan, you were there Sunday, and we thank you for that. It's a building that anybody in this village would be proud to say, yes, they're part of our community. We wanted, and we decided early, that we just didn't want to be in the community of Montgomery, we wanted to play a vital part of it. And you know, in my first business class in college, they said, "Reputation is not what you say you're going to do, but it's what you've done." For the three years, three and a half years that we've been there, there is a number of families at Nicholson School that are getting Christmas presents from a Santa Claus called Genesis Community Church. And the same thing's happening on Thanksgiving. Number of our people assist with the interfaith food pantry, and help, about every other month, they take their big food pantry truck to a low-income housing project, and we help with that, and then go to a senior citizens project and help with that. We have a program called Masters Mike, which meets on the second Sunday evening of every month, and is designed for our teenagers and young adults, where we provide pizza and pop, and believe me, they go through a lot of pizza and a lot of pop. But then we have Christian entertainment for them. It usually lasts about a half hour, and then we have an open mic for anybody that wants to participate. Last night, we had it, and we had thirty-five youngsters there with some great entertainment. But again, it's giving something back to this community. Habitat for Humanity, which I'm sure most of you are familiar with, meets, their executive offices are in the front part of that building now. And Pastor Jeff, our pastor that we're so proud of, is also the executive director for Habitat for Humanity. They've built ten homes in the village of Montgomery and have four more on the drawing board. We feel, again, that we're giving something back to the community. And those homes, if you ever saw the picture of them, they might not be the multimillion-dollar mansions, but they're the mansions to the people that end up living there. And they pay an average of four thousand dollars in taxes, so that's forty thousand, no matter how you look at it, to the community every year. It takes a good church to make a community, just like it takes good schools, good business atmospheres. And we feel that we are a good church. Every year at Montgomery Fest, the auto show, the car show, of course, is right across the street, where we schedule our church picnic that Sunday, and everybody that's walking back to their cars or walking to the car show knows that all they have to do is come in our parking lot, and there's free hot dogs and pop. Well, this year, we went through a lot of water. It was a pretty hot day that day. But again, it's just doing something, giving back to the community that we love. We're planning our future giving. And you know, we're not a mega-church, and we're not full of multimillionaires, but we give an appreciative money of our collections from every Sunday to other worthwhile organizations. Habitat Humanity is, is starting out a one million eight hundred thousand, Jeff, campaign, and we've pledged big dollars to that. If you would have told me we were going to do it a couple of years ago, and I said, "You're crazy." But we've got such a great workmanship with Habitat Humanity that our Board of Session voted to do it, and the congregation approved it. What we'd like to have from the village, and those of you that were familiar with our original financing, when we bought the building, financing on commercial properties was about impossible to get. And it's not a whole lot better now. So we put about half of the five hundred thousand plus down and financed the rest through the village. In those three and a half years, we have never missed a payment, and never have we paid just what our payment was supposed to be. We've always paid in excess of what our payment was supposed to be. And I'm sure Jeff, or, or any of your, your people in your finance department can verify that. We've never been late. One time, I thought we were, but that's because the check was sent in with our water bill, and we were credited eighteen hundred dollars on our water bill, but we corrected that right away. But we've been diligent. We've been diligent. Financing, again, is fairly tough, and we have to make some plans for our future giving. And what we, as members of the Genesis Community Church, would like the village board to consider is refinancing the balance of our note with a new five-year balloon. And five years are common in, in commercial loans, amortized out over twenty years at three point five percent interest. This allows us to continue to give like we feel we should as Christians. It allows us to do, continue to do what we want to do for the community, and it allows us to continue to be the type of church that this board is proud of. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to handle them.
Thank you, Chet. Appreciate it. I know that we probably definitely have comments going around the board. Denny, want to start?
Yeah, I think the main thing is we knew the Albright clan would fix the building up themselves, which saved you guys a lot of money, but, and I think Rick probably looks like a hundred and five years of playing softball for First United Press when you guys had that team. But you've done a great job for our community, especially Jeff and the businesses, loans. You guys have had a great track record on paying, even the girls in the office know that you always pay over, and you're always on time, so I just appreciate that.
I agree with what Danny said.
A couple of questions, if I may. Have you applied for a commercial loan? Is there anything that would prevent you from getting a commercial loan? Have you applied for a commercial loan?
Uh, yes, we have.
Were we named as a reference?
They were made aware that you are holding our current paper, yes.
And what was the outcome of your, was it what happened?
We've been approved.
So it, it is possible for you to get a commercial loan?
It is, not, not at the rates that we're comfortable with, Stan.
I have a kind of a question back on that one, is I've, I'm the president of our church, the last four years on Downer. Our property's worth, they say, ten point two million dollars, and the Second Bank kind of questions churches on anything over fifty thousand, mainly, and we're all debt-free at our church, but you still have to pay the money back. And they know that congregations can change like that, like ours did a couple of years ago, and it's a very, it's a tough, they can tell you, but, but the interest is going to be high, and it's not really a easy, easy loan, let's put it that way.
No, it's not an easy loan. We feel that things should be looked at as a business also, and we feel that our current program with the village of Montgomery, and hopefully our future one, is a good business decision also.
Real quickly, I'd like to ask Jeff to kind of run down the current loan, where we sit on that, and kind of when that, just this is that there is a five-year balloon that's due in the next year and a half, that's kind of why we're having a discussion, so I kind of want to run through that.
He's correct. The purchase price was somewhere around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars initially. They put down a hundred and eighty thousand, I think, up front, and then we financed through the village the additional two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars nominally. The way we figured it was we did amortize it over a twenty-year period to come up with the monthly payments, even though there was going to be a five-year balloon. We figured over twenty years at four and a half percent interest, is where it currently stands. He's correct. They have made every payment, you know, in a timely fashion. Monthly payments about seventeen hundred and twenty-seven dollars, they always round up to eighteen hundred. It currently stands at right around two hundred and forty thousand is the balance that remains, so.
And that's it, written at four and a half?
Yes.
And we're dropping it to three and a half?
That's a request, yes.
If there aren't any further comments, what we do is typical with the first request is I let the board chew on this this evening, and we'll discuss this with staff and get this on either a future agenda, if we're willing to pursue this. Otherwise, staff or myself will contact you guys. But we appreciate your commitment to Montgomery and for coming this evening, and what you'll be hearing from us soon.
We thank you for this action tonight, and we thank you for our current and future relationship. Thank you very much.
That, move on to the introduction of our new finance director, the guy nobody knows in the front row. I'd ask Justin to join me at the podium here.
Mike, great pleasure to introduce to you Justin Van Voren. He started last Tuesday, and I think I've told him every day since then how glad I am that he is here. So there is no one happier than me. I've made that clear. Justin graduated from Drake University. He initially went into public accounting before just realizing that municipal government was the way to, to go. And he comes to us from Sugar Grove, where he served as the finance director for the last nine years. He is a Montgomery resident out in Saratoga Springs, has one son and two daughters. He's helping in welcoming Justin Van Voren.
I'll, I'll briefly read through these, and then I'll entertain a motion for approval. The minutes of the committee of the whole meeting from August twentieth, the village board meeting minutes from August twenty-sixth, executive session minutes from August twenty-sixth, the building report from August twenty thirteen, accounts payable through September third in the amount of seven hundred and seventy thousand and change, the appointment by the village president of Haika Jan Schram, two nine nine five Shetland Lane, to the Historic Preservation Commission to fill a vacancy through May twenty-first of twenty fourteen, and then ordinance fifteen eighty-three, amending the village code regarding Class B liquor license closing hours, and that's a waiver of the first and passage on the second. If there aren't any questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve? Second.
Moved in second, take the roll, please.
Trusty Heinz.
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman.
Yes.
Trusty Marasek.
Yes.
Trusty Bond.
Yes.
Trusty Spurling.
Yes.
Trusty Lee.
Yes.
And that carries six zero. Move on this evening to items for separate action. Ordinance fifteen eighty-two, proposing the establishment of an SSA number thirty-seven for Lacone Company. And with that, I'll ask Attorney Anderson for his report on this.
Thank you. This is something that we haven't done for a while, but it used to be fairly routine. This is a backup SSA for a particular parcel that has a storm ordered detention area. The SSA funds that maintenance if the landowner doesn't fund it. So this is a little different than the residential SSAs that you're all probably familiar with, where those are active, and every year, we do fund them and take care of them. This one's a backup only, so it's kind of a security policy, if you will, or an insurance policy. Fairly routine in nature. This is the first of two ordinances to enact this. This is the proposing ordinance, the public hearing you obviously had tonight on it. And then, once you pass this one, then we have to wait about sixty days, and then we pass the establishing ordinance. That sixty-day period is so that if the landowners wish to object, they can. They won't, they actually want it and need it, because without it, we don't allow them to construct and occupy their buildings. And then, once that's done, you'll pass an establishing ordinance that will make it final. Then it will likely sit dormant forevermore. However, on the off chance that the landowners don't take care of their own property, it does give you the opportunity to effectuate repairs if necessary. With that, I can answer any questions if there are any.
Are there any questions?
No.
All right. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Trusty Heinz.
Second.
Second by Trusty Youngerman.
Trusty Heinz.
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman.
Yes.
Trusty Marasek.
Yes.
Trusty Bond.
Yes.
Trusty Spurling.
Yes.
Trusty Lee.
Yes.
And that carries six zero. Move on to item B this evening, award of a contract to BEM paving maintenance for the Montgomery Police Department lot, and then drive seal coating in the amount of twenty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. And with that, I'll turn it over to Director Povens.
Thank you, President Prowling. In your package tonight is actually, and this is slightly mistitled, what we're asking for is a waiver of bid, an award of contract. And we're admittedly walking a pretty fine line on the definition between proposals and bids, but I'll explain the process, and hopefully you'll see why we wanted to bring it to the board. We initially, this is to seal coat the parking lot at the police department. It was a budgeted item, it's been reviewed and approved in that sense. We initially went out for what we would call proposals, where we contact vendors that we've worked with, we explained the project to them, and asked them to send us a cost estimate. That is differentiated between a bid and where a bid is more formal, where we write formal specifications, we advertise in the newspaper, we allow so many days for bids to come in, we have a public opening, et cetera. So, we had sent out, we had received proposals, excuse me, those came in above twenty thousand dollars, which is our threshold for bidding, so we took the project out to bid. We didn't receive any bids on this. I'm not quite certain of all the reasons why no bids came in. We believe that the two companies that sent us proposals thought that they had already bid the project. They do not make that same differentiation between proposals and bids. So, we had, went through the formal process, didn't receive any bids. So, in light of the size of the project and the type of work, I don't feel we're going to see any significant downward push in the price of this, of this resurf, uh, seal coating if we go through the formal bid process again. So my recommendation tonight is to waive the formal bid process and award the contract based on the proposals that we received earlier initially. So, and that would be an award to BEM pavement maintenance for twenty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. So again, your brow is wrinkled, which is good, because that was confusing. But again, it's, it's walking a pretty fine line between the definition of proposals and bids, as I see it. But again, we wanted to bring it to the board, just to be on the safe side and open it up for discussion, because technically, we did not do a formal published, well, we did a formal published process and got no responses to it, so.
I'm confused. Where did the eighteen thousand come from as the estimate?
So as we do with all our projects, we look at previous bid numbers and quantities and try to make an estimate for what we think the work is going to cost. Generally, we're pretty right on this one is higher, though, by sixty-eight hundred dollars.
Sixty-eight hundred.
That's thirty-four percent.
Yeah.
Percentage-wise.
Little over, well, that's probably about thirty-six percent.
It's thirty-seven percent.
Well, I did the math in my head.
So did I.
Uh, yes, so the estimate is, was low on this project. And yes, it is a significant percentage increase. So again, we think it's an accurate number, though. We had to revise, you know, as we will do on the next one of these. We will take these bid prices into account. And, you know, we somewhat try to judge the test of waters and, you know, figure out which way bid prices are going, so.
How frequently are we doing the seal coating?
Pardon me?
How frequently are we seal coating?
This will be the first reseal coating for the police parking lot. When we did the village hall lot, that was the first seal coating. We don't have an established schedule at this point, but we're, we want to start working this into our regular CIP rotation. It's, uh, get a maintenance treatment that can extend the life of the asphalt. And eventually, it will need patching, and then eventually, it will need replacing. But we think the seal coating is a good intermediate process. So we'll include, uh, we did village hall last year. We want to do police this year, and then most likely, you'll see a request to seal coat the public works lot next year. And then we'll start working those into a regular sometime period of rotation. I don't know if it'll be every other year, every third year, but.
That could be a factor into why the cost is so high as well, right? First time?
Could be.
Kind of like painting your house the first time? Takes a lot more paint to paint the wall?
I haven't done a lot of seal coating, uh, bidding, Pete, I don't know how much your company does, but.
I think that was a contribu- contributing factor. The, the estimate was actually prepared two years ago. And I think the parking lot that the police facility deteriorated, you know, kind of more significantly than we thought. Our original proposal or request was to do both the village hall and police the same year. We didn't get approval for the police. So we just, we did a, we didn't go back out and reassess the parking lot. We probably should have, but we didn't. So we kept our old number in there, and that was probably why it's so low, so.
Materials cost probably.
Do we have anything to... Do we have anything to gain by sending this out to bid again? If there was confusion by some of the potential subcontractors?
I don't believe we do. I, I think the reason they didn't resubmit was because they thought they had already, when they sent us the proposal, I think they felt that they had already sent us the, the bid, what we're calling the bid. So if they'd have looked at this and said, "Well, based on all this, I can do it for less."
They would have done that.
They may have resubmitted.
Okay.
So again, I, I don't think we're going to see any downward push on the cost. And I say that just sometimes what you see is when you, when you formalize the bid process and you add more criteria and more steps, that causes cost to the contractor. And sometimes it's really beneficial on big projects to have the bid process where you have very specific and, you know, well-reviewed criteria. For simpler projects, sometimes it just adds to the cost, and you're really not gaining much benefit, if any, in the, in the outcome. The process that they use is not going to change because of how we would write a spec, anything like that.
And where is the funding for this, uh, the twenty-four, but also this, this sixty-eight hundred? What?
It's coming out of the general fund.
Right, it's budgeted in the general fund is where it's budgeted. As far as the additional over what's budgeted, um, I guess my answer would be right now, the last two years, we've seen a nominal surplus of revenue over expense in the general fund of approximately three hundred thousand dollars each year. So I don't know that I can tell you exactly which line item will be, but I feel there'll be savings elsewhere in the general fund budget that'll make this up.
Okay. Are there any other questions, uh, staff on this?
Just one, we're planning to do the, do this this year, right? Before the weather turns?
Right, yes. If it's approved tonight, we'll get the contract and sign with Beem and get them out here while it's still decent.
Are they going to do half and half as far as the lot for parking purposes?
At the stage that, yeah, we've already talked to Chief Myers about moving vehicles and figuring out how we're going to get all that work done, but Pete, any?
Yeah, I mean, it's key to keep the Sallyport open. So we're doing it in two pieces, Mike said part. And we're also keeping two public lots open with each phase, so that there's a place for people to park and get access to the building, and there's the ability for the police to get to the Sallyport. So we've split it into two pieces. They're not exactly the same area-wise, but it's a fairly even split, and that's how we're handling it.
Thank you.
I think this was a good discussion, though, because we're, uh, when Pete mentioned it was two years old as far as the, the cost estimate, and also it's seal crack and then doing the paint over and everything. I think we are so used to having the estimate almost on target all the time, that all of a sudden, we've seen one a third off, and it's like, wow. Where other towns, if you look in the paper, and Justin can't even verify this, do... Other towns around us are a lot of times way off by a third, and nobody thinks anything of it. We're just probably bringing it up because you guys are really good on your estimating, I think, usually.
Well, thank you for that, trustee Lee. And I'd have to give a lot of that credit to Pete and his staff. I mean, especially for the big projects. They really have their finger on the pulse of the local, you know, bid conditions and where prices are coming in, and their work in other communities benefits us, quite honestly, so.
Excellent.
I will steal as much of that compliment as I can, but my conscience will only allow so much.
Awesome, thank you. If there are no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Motion by trustee Marasek.
Second.
Second by trustee Lee. Take the role, please.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Sperling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
And that carries six zero.
Thank you.
Move on for items for discussion this evening, which is village policy for naturalized stormwater basins.
Planner Chipman.
Now I'll turn it over to Senior Planner Chipman.
Thank you, President Brawley. This evening, we want to ask the board a question. Three, excuse me, about four or five years ago, uh, during the RJ Keck building project, a question came up from the owners of RJ Keck, and it was, do, did they have to do our naturalized stormwater basin plantings? And at that point in time, the RJ Keck project also had a swale in its backyard that could meet the Kane County stormwater definition as a second best management practice. Therefore, the board felt that on single parcel developments that, that could meet the Kane County stormwater ordinance requirements of having a BMP, a best management practice, that we would not, that the village would not, uh, require the naturalized stormwater plantings at those locations. Basically, what we're asking this evening is, uh, there's a new board. Does that policy, does that internal policy still remain? Is that still, uh, what you would like to see for the village and for these small, single-lot developments? With that, I guess I'd ask if there are any questions.
Sure. Yeah. I just had one question for him first. The, um, for the benefit of, of everybody, really, our stand, it's, our standard is above and beyond that of the counties, correct?
That is, that is correct.
And it's only for the plantings that go in the basin?
That is correct.
And with that, I'll turn it over to...
Just to try to put a point on it is, back in the day, the village had a very high-level, award-winning stormwater basin ordinance. I'm serious, award-winning nationally, and was pretty proud of it. But then, two thousand and eight happened, you know, everybody's finances took a turn for the worse. RJ Keck was one of the few that was actually building. And so when they came to the board, they said, "Do we really have to do this gold standard?" I remember the quote being, "Do we have to meet this gold standard?" The board at that time said, "No." In fact, the quote from trustee Keck, no relation, obviously, to the Keck project, was, "We don't, we can't hold people to this standard at this time. Let's apply a lead standard." You know, "Let's go substantially down. Let's see what we can meet as the minimum criterion," which is what Jared references as the Kane County stormwater ordinance. And so that's what was done. We realized when we, when we have new projects coming online now, the economies have changed a little bit. And most importantly, the board has changed, you know, in character, is we wanted to re-verify whether or not we should be applying the lead standard still or whether we should return to the gold standard, or of course, something in between. But that's kind of the, the question just restated.
I'd also like to emphasize that this is for the small one parcel developments. This is not for something as large as, say, a new residential subdivision. We still, as per, uh, board direction, are still looking to fully implement the guidelines on, uh, large, multi parcel developments.
I know that this wasn't part of the ordinance or anything, but the one parcel definition could be, I mean, one parcel could be a quarter of an acre that somebody develops. Was there a size? You know, because somebody could come in with one parcel that's ten acres. Obviously, we would enforce, at least I hope we would, our standard for that. Is that, how was staff, not that we had any ten-acre developments, but how were you addressing that?
We have not put an acreage amount on it. Typically, if we do have a question, we've brought this discussion item back to the board just to clarify and to verify as it was a, uh, you know, was an unwritten policy that the board directed us to implement. However, we can certainly with this policy build in some form of threshold.
Well, just to add to that, what we had been doing was considering it on a case-by-case basis, because you'd be looking at lots that are under single control, whether they be a quarter acre or ten acres. And also, the use was less, um, less visible. So you wouldn't see these detention basins. They're typically industrial or commercial where they're behind buildings, and the only people who care about them are the landowner. So that's typically where you saw the analysis come in.
One thing that might be helpful, and if board members have comments on this, you know, jump right in, is to get, at a future board meeting, actually have a presentation of our standard that we've set previously. I know that we have one probably, um, banked somewhere of what the standard was that we set it, maybe the thought process behind it, but what it achieves and how important best management practices are for water quality. I know that we, we held our, our fire department to the, to the standard, I believe, back in the day. And I, and I've said this before, if we're going to, uh, hold them to that, then we better hold, hold our developers to that as well. So that's just my opinion. But I know that a brief discussion on it tonight will be helpful, but maybe to go in for, for the new board members, what that standard is and how, I mean, how it was set. If anybody has any thoughts on that, Stan?
I was able to examine a, kind of a gridded chart from Kane County regarding their stormwater ordinance, and they list about a dozen possible solutions and their effectiveness. And I, I think I was going to challenge the gold and the lead analogy, because just plain old turf grass is fine for mitigating water runoff, which is the prime directive, and for cleansing the water itself. So whether it's turf grass or prairie wildflowers, the object is still the same. The, the debate is about what level of solution do we want to demand of a commercial developer or a residential developer? And I, my own self, I would prefer that we look at developments in a commercial or industrial area with a slightly different set of eyes. Those wildflowers, um, while they would be nice, are, don't contribute to the, the jobs and the economic development that we're seeking, and they won't be seen by very many eyes. But I don't think our debate here is about this solution is so much better than that one. It's just a different tactic for arriving at the same end. And there is that Kane County chart that is based on studies of what solutions yield what kind of results. And turf grass was right up there with prairie wildflowers, even though I'm a big fan of prairie wildflowers. We probably shouldn't have done that to, to our commercial developers.
Do have just one comment on that, because I just gave a presentation on BMPs at work. With regards to turf grass, and I know I won't put Engineer Wallers or Mike Povens on the spot on this. In DuPage County, which we don't live in, uh, really has one of the more strict BMP ordinances. And, uh, turf grass is actually not an approved BMP per their ordinance. It's, it's damn near the, darn near the bottom of the, of their standards that they set. Turf grass, you know, with regards to removal of heavy solids or, or metals and that. So I think that the, it's a lot, it's much more than the flowers in the basin, but I, the wetland basins are the highest quality that they set. So it definitely is, per their ordinance at least, and theirs is more restrictive than Kane and Kendall, and it goes on. The wetland basins are the highest quality that, um, are required by ordinances. I just wanted to comment on that, but.
I think a lot of it comes down to, as Steve said, that individual development. If somebody's going to see it, if somebody's, you know, if it's going to, um... I would have loved the fire department to have some apple trees so I could get apples from them, but Tom didn't want to do it. But I would say every, every, uh, land is different, you know, it's a... I don't want to get down to just throw some grass seed down, basically, but at the same time, I think we were a little above board on some things. Depends where, which it was.
A common sense approach to it.
Yeah, where it was.
If it's behind the building and...
Yeah.
There's really no reason for them to spend ten thousand dollars putting in a wildlife refuge.
Any other comments?
No.
I, I think I'd like to see that presentation. Even with my background, I'd still like to see that presentation.
All right. If there isn't any other discussion on this this evening, we'll move on, and we'll, um, look for a, the future board meeting on that. Uh, future meetings, I won't read through the list, but definitely, everybody in this room, remember the Wednesday night this week, seven PM, back at this house, so. Plan Commission, Historic Preservation Committee of the Hall. Uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss negotiating matters pursuant to five ILCS, one twenty over two, seat two.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, take the role, please.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Sperling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
Whoops. You know what, I disabled. You want to do your update?
We don't do updates.
Oh, do you have any newer unfinished?
I do not know.
Okay, I'll go back to it. All right, we'll call the meeting back to order. Real quick, uh, in my haste, I skipped number eight down at the bottom of the page, which is newer unfinished business. Didn't want to cut anybody short if they had anything to bring up this evening. Newer unfinished? Hearing none? Entertain a motion to adjourn. We'll move.
Second.
Moved in second, take the role, please.
Trustee Heinz.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Sperling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And we're adjourned. Thank you.